It's still turning, yeah, it is. Bachelor Planning Commission meeting to order, March 17th, 2008, and it turned out to be a gorgeous day today. And we would like to begin by having the invocation. Mr. Phil Edwards from Central Christian Church is going to lead us in the invocation, and if everyone would remain standing, Commissioner Salazar will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So, Mr. Edwards?
Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight to acknowledge your sovereign place in our midst even this evening. We are reminded of the words of Scripture which say that everything in the heavens and earth is yours, oh Lord, and this is your kingdom. We adore you as being in control of everything. Riches and honor come from you alone, and you are the ruler of all mankind. Your hand controls power and might, and it is at your discretion that men are made great and given strength. And so while we acknowledge your sovereign place, we also realize the great responsibility you've given to man to govern, and to govern well. And so it is my prayer, Lord, tonight, that you would give great grace and wisdom to these men and women who bear the responsibility of public servants to serve our community and to lead and to guide us in ways that are honoring to you and a blessing to those who live in this valley. We thank you and pray your great blessing and wisdom on this place in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please put your hand over your heart and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
If we could have the roll call, please.
Commissioners, Phil present. Ms. McPherson absent.
Salazar.
Here.
Vice Chairman Trott.
Here.
Chairman Mann.
I am here.
Thank you.
Public business from the floor. If an individual is unable to stay through the entire meeting due to extenuating circumstances, a total of 10 minutes is provided at this time during which input may be given regarding agenda items. Individual speakers are limited to two minutes each. Any person who would like to address the Planning Commission on any agendaized item is requested to complete a speaker's card for the recording secretary and identify the agenda item which you'd like to address, or excuse me, you would like to discuss. Each person will be given an opportunity to address the Planning Commission at the time such item is discussed by the Planning Commission. Speaker cards are available at the rear of the council chambers. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. Uncontested public hearing. An uncontested public hearing is when the oral staff report will not be presented if, number one, no one in the audience wishes to speak in opposition to the item to be heard, and, number two, the applicant has reviewed the staff report and agrees to abide by the conditions recommended in the report, and, number three, the members of the commission wish to waive the staff report. The chairman will then entertain a motion to act upon the item. We may have a couple of those before us tonight. That brings us to the consent calendar, approval of minutes, and that would be the minutes from the regular meeting of February 19th, 2008. I'm looking for a motion on that item.
I move, make a motion that we accept the minutes from our last meeting.
I'll second.
This call for the, let's just do it orally. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? And let's let the record show that Commissioner McPherson is not present. That brings us to continued public hearings. Agenda item number two, tentative tract map number 66680 and tentative parcel map number 69747. We'll declare the public hearing open and let the record reflect that there's a recommendation to continue this item to our regular meeting of April 21st, 2008, Planning Commission meeting. Do I have a motion on that?
Also move that we continue tentative tract map number 6680 and tentative parcel map number 69747 to the April 21st, 2008 Planning Commission meeting.
So there's been a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Let's call for the question.
Motion carries five zero. Excuse me, four zero.
That brings us to agenda item number three. It's conditional use permit number 06-02 and tentative parcel map 69776. We'll declare the public hearing open. And again, there is a request before us to continue this item as well to our April 21st, 2008, regular Planning Commission meeting to allow time to determine offsite improvement issues.
Chairman Mann, I'll be abstaining from this due to the location of my personal residence to the project.
Okay, let the record reflect that Commissioner Trott is abstaining from agenda item number three. So with that, we're looking for a motion to continue this item.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we continue this project to the April 21st, 2008 Planning Commission meeting to allow time to determine offsite improvement issues.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Why don't we do it electronically, see if these work tonight.
Motion carries three zero.
You're reaching there. Yeah, we could, just barely hear you.
Motion carries three zero.
Okay, and that's one, and also let the record reflect that was an abstention from Commissioner Mark Trott. Okay, that brings us to agenda item number four. Would be 4A, a request for a one-year extension, conditional use permit number 04-06. We'll declare the public hearing open, and I believe Ms. Watson is the presenter for that. Alma, why don't we go ahead and have the staff report?
Good evening, Chairman Mann, Commissioners. This is a request for one-year extension for CUP 04-06. The applicant is Ray Lim. The location is at 500 East Avenue K. The request is to expand the existing 1,220-foot square foot drive-through dairy to 2,500 square feet and to convert it to a mini-market, also to construct a gas station with four pump islands and 4,000-square-foot building for restaurant, laundromat, and retail uses in the sea zone. The staff recommends that the Planning Commission grant a one-year extension to February 21st, 2009, based on the findings contained in the staff report and subject to minor revisions to the Resolution 613. On February 21st, 2006, the Planning Commission approved conditional use permit 04-06 for two years. This is the only extension available for this project. The applicant states that the completion of the building plans will require additional time. That concludes my report, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Watson? No? Okay. And let the record reflect that we have a, oh, I'm sorry. I want to make sure it is. I gotta, that's the letter that we received. Did we not uncontested? Okay. So please let the record reflect that we've received a contested letter on this particular item. And is the applicant here? If you'd like to come forward and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jim Hanbali. I'm the project engineer, and I have with me owner, Mr. Ray Lim.
Okay.
And we are here to talk about the letter. Since we're going through this extension, we'd like to see if we can address those items and the conditions of approval. Mr. Ray Lim can explain that he's in the business and is familiar with it.
Before you elaborate in relationship to the letter, Ms. Donovan, do we have, do we have speaker cards on this item, too?
Yes, we do, from Jim Hanbali, the applicant's engineer.
All right. So, and that's it, then? Okay. All right, Ray, go ahead.
Right now, I'd like to expand my sea store instead of drive-through area. I'd like to expand it to convenience store and four gas pump on the adjacent to it and a couple other new units next to it. And right now, but, you know, I didn't realize that two years ago, the city of Lancaster had a condition for my ABC license, which I could not sell, what, any single bar or can under 44 ounce. And if the city of Lancaster imposed that condition to my business, you know, it would be a hardship for me to run a business, you know, that would allow me to sell only, what, 12-pack and six-pack. And it's just hard for us to do business because the license itself didn't exist, so they are about 20 years already, and we don't have any condition from the ABC. And one more thing, I agree to it, Lancaster imposed their conditions to it for me, the alcohol from 7:00 a.m. to midnight, I agree to it. But please do not put a condition on others' alcohol, just like wine and more liquor and single can, you know, because people would like to come to the convenience store and get off from work, and they purchase, what, a can of 24-ounce or 40-ounce or 32-ounce or 16-ounce to go home and consume, even consume it at home. And if we don't have that kind of, of a single can to provide to the customer, the customer wouldn't come to my convenience store at all. They'd rather go to 7-Eleven, 8:00 p.m. or some other liquor store, just like one-stop, that's it all. I think that is pretty unfair for me to impose that kind of condition from city of Lancaster. And plus, I never have any bad record or with the communities at all from the last seven years. And lately, the city of, I mean, the chef station did a sting on us three or four times, and we never got caught or we never sold any tool, a miner also, and our records were clean and clear. And plus, the building is going to be stayed right there. We just expanded. We are not doing, moving the buildings to any location. And if you please just remove or modify the condition, I would appreciate it, if you could.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Lim? All right, anything else for us?
I just want to mention that at that time when we did the first CUP, the CUP, the alcohol ordinance wasn't existing at that time. Now, we do have a new ordinance, so we discussed it with the planning, and we don't have a problem with the new ordinance. But he has these issues, and I would like to see if we can address these issues.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you. Have a seat. And Ms. Donovan, you say we have no other speaker cards?
That's correct.
Okay. It's difficult, huh? You know, I think if you brought that down, that might work. No? You keep wanting to push it back up, maybe you ought to just leave it down and then...
How's that?
Okay. No, it's just about the same. We'll work around it.
How's that one?
Oh, that's very good.
I'll move over.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question for Ms. Donovan.
Sure, go ahead.
In regards to this letter of, this contested letter, specifically on the alcohol ordinance, will you just review that new ordinance and how does that compare to what they're asking for here?
The new alcohol ordinance basically allows the Planning Commission to add some of the information that is on this existing. For instance, item number K would allow the Planning Commission to restrict alcoholic beverages sales by container size and type, where such restriction is determined to be necessary for the reasonable protection of public health and safety. There's the ability in the new ordinance to regulate those three items if you choose to do so. My main concern about this is that these conditions were originally established two years ago, and that if the applicant chose to make modification to those items, number three, four, and six, he should do so by mending the, or applying for a new alcohol ordinance to amend, like the fortified alcohols where you restricted them in February of '06. So he has the ability to come forward, because he's already started the process of grading on this project. He's already started the construction process. So my thought would be is that he would need to come forward and amend, come forward with the new alcohol ordinance for an amendment there.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Trott?
Yes. Currently, that mini-market operates under CUP, is that correct?
Uh, no. Currently, the new, the existing liquor store does not operate under any restrictions.
Their grandfathered in.
I think they were approved in 89.
But I was under the impression that the original building was built with a conditional use permit, the original drive-through. Where I'm heading with this is that I drove past your establishment yesterday, and your landscaping, I think, is not in compliance with either whatever you used to pull or whenever it was built, your landscaping looked horrible. I mean, I just call it like it is. And I have a real issue granting any kind of an extension where the existing facility is either out of sync with the existing conditional use permit or the ordinance that's in place. I mean, it's, there is no landscaping. It's weeds. The sign has graffiti that's just been painted over on it. And I actually brought this up to Brian about 90 days ago, and he was going to have code enforcement look at it. And my position on this, any extension, in my opinion, I'd like to only see for 30, 30 days to give him the opportunity to get his existing landscaping and signage cleaned up to where he's an asset to the neighborhood instead of, in my opinion, not an asset to the neighborhood. Because, I mean, there is landscaping that's inclusive of his new project, right?
That's correct.
And so what's the point of moving forward if what's there right now, I think, is a little bit of an eyesore?
And you are correct. We did approve the project originally in April 10th, 89. The original CUP was for the drive-through dairy.
And I'm sure in that conditional use permit was the maintaining of landscaping, is that correct?
That is correct.
And like I said, it had to be three or four months ago I brought this up to Brian, and he was going to turn it over to code enforcement. I hate to be a pain in the rear, but, you know, the condition in CUPs are conditions in CUPs.
Since the applicant was approved in April, I mean, February, you could continue it for 30 days if you would like to, without jeopardizing his existing CUP, and see what how, what progress he makes in those 30 days if you chose to do that.
Now, let's let Mr. Lim come back up and, go ahead, Mr. Lim.
I understand that the landscaping and the place, man, looks so terrible, so that's why I decided to go, I decided to be fully remodeling with the whole landscaping and the building and the sign. And the place is going to be a Valero gas station, and the Valero's been approved already for, I mean, to be brand to a Valero gas station, and everything's going to look brand-new, it's going to look awesome. And the landscaping's going to be, looks perfect than what it is right now, and...
Okay. Do we have a... Go ahead, Mr. Trott. Go ahead.
Ms. Donovan, what's changing, though, is nothing that, where the existing landscaping is. It looks like the existing landscaping is not going to be necessarily touched. There's not going to be any buildings moved or anything like that.
No, there's a modification there. I'm looking at a site plan, Sylvia, that we have in our packet, and it shows to me as if the, and being familiar with the location, that existing mini-market will stay, and then obviously with the, looks like to me what would be currently his drive-through will be now inline parking to the building, I think, if I'm seeing that correct. Am I not? And then, too, what would be effectively to the west will now become a new landscaped area?
That's correct. The pumps will be moved to the other side, to the east side of the project.
Okay.
And right now, where you have the drive-through, you have, also have about 10 feet of landscaping on Avenue K and Fifth Street East. It's, it would be replaced on Avenue K with 30 feet of landscaping and 30 feet on Fifth Street East as well.
Right.
The 10 feet would be increased by 20 additional feet on both sides of the building at that corner location. In addition, they'll have some landscaping buffering the residential to the south. So, in answer to your question, Chairman Trott, he currently has 10 feet of landscaping, and he'll be required to add 20 feet on both sides of the building. Can I answer your question?
It answers my question, but that landscaping's been bad for several years. Being, having been a resident on the east side for a long time, not anymore, but having been, and I try to bring these up to Brian's attention as I'm out in the community and I see him, and very seldom do we have a chance to kind of have some control over him like this evening, in my opinion.
So, just so there's some clarification from my understanding, so that we can make a decision here or not make a decision. So then, your recommendation would be to continue this for 30 days, to allow them to either take care of the sign, because we're talking about the graffiti on the sign as well, which, which sounds like to me is not adequate to your, to your liking, and then, number two, deal, to deal with the landscaping. My recommendation would be to turn around, put it in the staff's hands, let them go out there with code enforcement, give him 30 days, and let them come up with some kind of a resolution of what they think is best for the city, and then just bring it back before us.
Yeah, I'll bow out on that.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, as long as it gets handled, that's, that's my concern. I mean, if, if that sign's going to come down during your course of construction, then, then take the panels that have graffiti on them and get rid of them now, and if you're going to be tearing all that landscaping out, at least go through the process now of getting the weeds out of there and the garbage and stuff. This isn't just something that's, we both know, something that just hasn't happened over the last couple of weeks on this project. And so I would concur with Chairman Mann that if, you know, we can handle it through staff and not have the developer incur any additional expenses, but get the issue handled, then, then I'm in favor of that.
Okay. So then, I would like to make a motion then to grant a 30-day continuous to the April 21st meeting with direction given to staff to work with Mr. Lim to address the signage, at least through the course of construction, if that's the case. If they're, you know, they're grading the lot next door, obviously, he's not going to cease doing business out of that, at least I'm going to assume he's not, out of that particular location for, for the entire duration of the new construction on the other side, and then do whatever would be appropriate from a standpoint of cleanup on the landscaping. And then, Mr. Lim, I do want to caution you that for you to come before us tonight and make statements in relationship to your business, you also have to realize that we all have to be good neighbors, and based on what Commissioner Trott has said, although I am quite familiar with the location, you have to realize that there is conditions that are placed on the CUP, and just because we're moving forward with construction doesn't mean we throw up our hands and say, gee, for the last four or five months, because I was, I knew I was going to construct an addition to this particular business, I don't have to have any more responsibility about being a good neighbor and taking care of my business. And I think that's probably what, probably disappoints Commissioner Trott the most in relationship to what he sees now, so. So with that, that's my motion. So I guess I'm looking for a second.
I'll second it. And are we also going to address the concerns brought up in regards to the other requests?
No, because all we're going to do at this stage in the game is my motion on the floor is just to continue it until April 21st and then let it be dealt with at that point in time.
Beautiful. That's fine with me.
Okay. So that's my motion.
I second that.
Okay, and there's a second. Let the record reflect, there's a motion and a second. Commissioners, any discussion?
I would just say, I'm, I would be very prone, when this comes back before us next month, to go with staff's recommendation. We spent a lot of time looking at that alcohol ordinance. We need consistency within our city, and I'm going to support staff on that and not support what, what the owner would like regarding that. Just want the owner to know that on record as well.
Okay. And I myself, too, given that you brought that up, I do want to make sure that people are aware, it's this Planning Commission that spent the, what I would consider the legwork to come up and draft, which is now part of the city ordinance, the new alcohol policy, and, and as long as I'm still the chairman on the Planning Commission and anti-commissioner, then I'm going to be consistent with what we worked on and came to resolution and now is part of the ordinance, so. All right, just call for the question then. You're with me here, I'm trying to get organized. Four, we're on agenda item 4B, conditional use permit number 05-02, a request for an Okay, just want to make sure I'm clear. We'll declare the public hearing open, and Ms. Davis, why don't we go ahead and hear the staff report on this item?
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. We have a conditional use permit number 0502 to request an extension. The applicant is requesting to construct a 13,614-square-foot church and an 11,371-square-foot multi-purpose hall with Sunday school classrooms in the R-7,000 zone. This project was previously approved on March 17th of 2006, and they're, excuse me, 2008, 2007, pardon me, and is asking for a one-year extension. If you have any questions for me at this time, I can answer them.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Davis? Okay. Ms. Donovan, do we have any speaker cards?
Yes, we do. Pam Weir opposing the project.
Okay, so then we'll go ahead and, is the applicant here tonight for, I don't know if I'm going to do damage to this, is Kristoffur and Alicia Fiero?
I'm Raquel Gaskin.
I'm sorry?
My name is Raquel Gaskin. I'm part of the...
Okay, if you'd like to come forward and speak on behalf of the applicant.
Pretty much, this was approved in 2007, and we just needed some more...
Excuse me, if you'd state your name and address for the record?
It's Raquel Gaskin, I live at 1743 West Holwood Street in Lancaster. And this was approved, and pretty much, we just needed some more time to get all the procedures done with the construction, architectural, and everything that the city has required of us.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions? All right, why don't you take a seat there, given that we have some speaker cards on this item? And Ms. Donovan, you say we have one speaker?
That's correct.
All right, if you'd...
Pam Weir.
Good evening, Pam. If you'd state your name and address for the record?
Pam Weir, 2206 East Lancaster Boulevard, that's in Lancaster. Reason why I'm opposing it is I've come before you guys for the last three years regarding two other projects that are just east. two other projects that are just east of me. First Pacifica being one of them and I don't know the name of the other construction. There was conditions put on First Pacifica as far as our dust issue, which I brought pictures several times and I'm sure some of you will remember them. A road's torn up, we have major, major dust issues. And here we go again with yet a third project that is now on the east side of me that my car's pitted, my window's pitted, they've got these major things in the middle of the construction for First Pacifica, there's graffiti all over the place. I mean, I invite you to come down my road on any given day when it's raining. I guarantee you none of you want to take your car down there. I have one way in, one way out, I can no longer get out of Nugent, it's been that way. I was promised lots and lots of conditions, what, a year ago? And God only knows what happened to First Pacifica. So I'm very much in oppose of this. I've got a child with medical problems, I can bring more pictures, I run out there all the time and take them, you know, and I just, I don't think we should be doing any more construction until we get some of these others under control. And I'm sure you remember the pictures from the last time I was here.
You said First Pacifica is east of you, aren't they west of you?
They are west of me.
Okay.
And then this project here would also be west of me and right, I mean, right across street.
Can you point it out on the map up there for us? Where you're at?
Let's see, I'm on 22nd East and Lancaster Boulevard, so. No, I'm terrible. Where's Lancaster Boulevard? So, because this church is being dropped right in the middle of a bunch of housing projects. Okay, that. And the church is going right there, so I'm. Yeah, because where the church would be-
Church is sandwiched between the housing project.
Okay, so I'm up a little bit into the right.
Actually, you're south.
Yeah.
Is that where I'm at?
Yeah.
Thank you, Carla.
You're just off the picture to the south. If you took that red dot down, you'd be right about in there.
Okay. So it's not either the two houses that are showing to the, I guess would be to the east of where the church is going?
It's south of Lancaster Boulevard, east of 22nd Street East, just off the frame.
Right. Okay. Commissioners, any questions for Pam?
It was kind of funny, she brings up dust control ordinances because as I was driving around yesterday, you can see my notes under commission agenda was to bring up where's our dust control ordinance.
Right.
Because I saw the project has all those big sewer pipes stacked on it and graffiti all over the green.
And all the graffiti all over it.
Now, it does look like they've put down on that project, I kind of got out and walked around, it looks like they've kind of, or have put down the sealant.
Well, my neighbors are maintaining the fence right now. Every time, because there's only one wind block fence, so there's two gentlemen that live next door to me and they go over and they're maintaining the fence, so.
Okay. Any other questions for Pam? All right, thank you Pam. Carla, questions for you? Where, I suspect, given the downturn in the housing market, Pacific is probably, have they pulled up stakes or do we have a dialogue or presence with them?
No longer with First Pacifica. There is a, I think a parent company, Regency Homes, that we have had some recent communication with regarding sewer, but you're right, the project is fairly inactive right now. You'd asked the question about the dust control ordinance. The Public Works Department will be bringing a dust control ordinance to the city council at a future agenda, it's not agendized yet, that will address dust control in an ordinance form instead of how we've been trying to work with the existing ordinance.
Right, without really having some teeth behind it and being able to manage it. And this, in regards to the church moving forward, what's your general thoughts about, I mean, obviously what's, you've spoke with the applicant, what do you see the timing on this in relationships to the ordinance?
I, in all honesty, I do not know the schedule for the church. They're asking for an extension and I don't know that they are looking to break ground and start construction anytime soon. That would be a question better ask of the applicant, what their schedule is.
Sure. All right. Okay. Then maybe that's what we'll do. Obviously, we always give the applicant a chance for rebuttal. Ms. Donovan, do we have any other speaker cards on this?
No, we do not.
Okay. So we're going to allow the representative for the church to come back and I've got some, obviously a question now. So, obviously, one of the things before us is an extension for, it looks like, until January 17th, 2009. So, do you know any, do you know what the current schedule is for the thought process in regards to the church?
We have submitted in when we did the extension, pretty much what we were planning. I'm assuming that about sometime in the summertime is when we'll probably start the actual construction and by then I believe it'll probably be less windy. I understand right now the control is because of the winds and what have you, but pretty much we're just trying to keep track of everything that you guys have asked us for so far and we're working from there with the engineers and so.
Okay. And your estimation is sometime during the summer?
I would assume yes, maybe July, June, July, if not August.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. So now I'm going to go back to you Carla, I'll put you on the spot. Enjoy doing that once in a while. So, obviously, we've got a somewhat of a thought process in relationship to maybe timing. Obviously, that's still speculative, but let's say it's July. Do you feel confident that sometime between now and July we'll have before us, or before the city council, a, some kind of a comprehensive dust control ordinance that maybe we would be able to alleviate the, some of the concerns that we've had historically about project breaks ground and then we don't necessarily have our hands around it and then things get out of control and the next thing we know is we've got dust stacked up to the high heaven on one side of the project or the other?
I would say that the dust control ordinance will go before the council by July. I don't know that with 100% certainty, but I believe that it will. And if the project were to start, we would use the existing requirements and enforce them to the best of our ability like we have done on other projects. The new ordinance will give the city, will put more teeth into the enforcement of it and will be a help, but we, we're not helpless. We can handle dust control with what we have in place, this would just be a better tool.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, any questions for staff?
I have a follow-up question for Carla. The items on 20th Street West, a fence there and I believe sewer items, do we know timing of when that's supposed to be in place?
We do not. Like I said, I would consider the project inactive. There is no, from what I can tell, no plans to go out and install sewer or do anything towards construction of anything further on the site.
Those items have been there for some time.
Yes, as with many tracks that are beginning to go inactive, the city will have to look at enforcement of the undertaking agreements and bonds. And I know that our Development Engineering Division has met or will be meeting shortly with Allison Burns from the city attorney's office to strategize how to address that. It will be a complicated process. I had the experience of going through that in the early 90s where we had 52 tracks that were in default and went through the process of working on the bonds and stuff. It's something that we are starting to address as projects start dropping out.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions? Mr. Trott?
I was just going to make a motion.
Okay.
If we're at that point.
Commissioner Foote, is there any questions that you have with staff? Okay. All right, obviously, we're looking for some kind of action on this, so.
Chairman, may I ask a question?
We've closed the public hearing, so my apologies, once we allow the applicant to rebut, then typically we don't open the, unless it's the Commissioner's wishes to do so. I'm sorry. All right, looking for some kind of action on, motion?
Being by there yesterday and seeing that there's no grading taking place on this particular property, so therefore they're not, in my opinion, violating any of the previous conditions in their CUP, I'm going to make a motion that we grant a one-year extension to January 17th, 2009, based on the findings listed below and subject to the revised attachment to resolution number 06-02.
All right, there's been a motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Let's call for the question.
Motion carries 4-0.
Okay, that brings us to agenda item number 4C. Be vesting tentative tract map number 61818, request for an extension. We'll declare the public hearing open and I believe there's been a request on this item, if I'm not correct, Ms. Donovan, for a continuance. Is that not correct? Okay. So with that, we're looking for a motion for a continuance to our April 21st, 2008 planning commission meeting.
I'll make the motion that we continue tentative tract map number 61818 to our April 21st, 2008 meeting.
There's been a motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Let's call for the question.
Motion carries 4-0.
Agenda item number 4D, tentative tract map number 61970, request for an extension. I believe Commissioner Salazar has a statement to make, I believe, on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I'll abstain from this owning real estate within 500 feet of this property.
Okay.
You could go behind the curtain, huh?
And why don't we go ahead, Alma, and why don't we hear the staff report?
Tentative tract map number 61970, request for a one-year extension. The location is located on the southeast corner of East Avenue K6 and Carroll Drive. The request is for a subdivision for nine single-family lots in the R-7,000 zone. The staff recommends that the planning commission grant a one-year extension to January 17th, 2009, subject to the attached revised resolution 06-06. On January 17th, 2006, the planning commission approved tentative tract map 61970 for two years. This is the first request for the extension of the map. The applicant states that the completion of the final improvement plans will require additional time. That concludes my report.
Okay. Commissioners, questions for Ms. Watson? Okay. Ms. Donovan, do we have any speaker cards on this agenda item?
No, we do not.
Okay. And let the record reflect that we've received a letter from the applicant agreeing to all the conditions. Is that not true, Ms. Donovan? At least that's what my notes say?
Yeah. Yes, we have received them.
Okay, well then with that, then we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and I'll open it up for discussion and/or entertain a motion on this agenda item.
I'd like to move that we grant a one-year extension to January 17th, 2009, based on the findings listed below and subject to the revised attachment to resolution number 06-06.
There's a motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Let's call for the question.
Motion carries 3-0 with Salazar abstaining.
Yeah, you might have to go get him with our mic system tonight. That brings us to agenda item number 4E, tentative tract map number 62873, request for an extension. We'll go ahead and declare the public hearing open. Ms. Donovan, do we have any speaker cards on this agenda item?
No, we do not.
Okay. Let the record reflect that we have a letter from the applicant agreeing to all the conditions. So if it's the Commissioner's wishes, we'll go ahead and then waive the hearing of the staff report and close the public hearing and I'll open it up for Commissioners' discussion and/or entertain a motion on this item.
I'd like to make the motion that we grant a one-year extension to February 21st, 2009, based on the findings listed below and subject to added condition number 7, 8, 9 and all other approved conditions.
Okay, there's been a motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Let's call for the question.
Motion carries 4-0.
Okay, that brings us to agenda item 4F, tentative tract map number 62979, a request for an extension. We'll go ahead and declare the public hearing open and Ms. Donovan, do we have any speaker cards on 4F?
No, we do not.
Okay, let the record reflect that. We also have a letter from the applicant agreeing to all the conditions. So if it's with agreement of the commission, we'll go ahead and waive the hearing of the staff report then and close the public hearing and I'll open it up for discussion on this item and/or entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we grant a one-year extension to February 21st, 2009, based on the findings contained in the staff report and subject to modified standard condition number 54, deleted standard condition number 59, added conditions number 6, 7 and 8 and all other previously approved conditions.
There's been a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, so let's call for the question.
Motion carries 4-0.
That brings us to agenda item 4G, tentative tract map number 64211, request for an extension. We'll go ahead and declare the public hearing open. Ms. Donovan, do we have any speaker cards on this item?
No, we do not.
Okay, seeing that we do not, let the record reflect that we've received a letter from the applicant agreeing to all the conditions. And so if it's the Commissioner's wishes, we'll go ahead and waive the hearing of the staff report and close the public hearing on this agenda item and then open it up for discussion and/or entertain any motions on item 4G.
I'll make a motion that we grant a one-year extension to February 21st, 2009, based on the findings contained in the staff report and subject to the added condition number 17, 18, 19 and all other previously approved conditions.
There's been a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Let's call for the question.
Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. Agenda item number 5, conditional use permit 07-09, we'll go ahead and declare the public hearing open. And if I'm not correct, Ms. Donovan, is there a request for this agenda item for continuance? Or no?
No.
Okay. Want to make sure we, where some of those notes were written, I was not for sure. All right, we'll go ahead and hear the staff report.
Chairman Mann and planning commissioners, the applicant Pedro Aravalo is requesting a conditional use permit to allow existing, the existing skating rink to be used as a banquet hall for wedding receptions, quinceañeras, birthday parties, including live music incidental to the private party and the sale of beer type 40 license in the commercial zone. Currently, the applicant operates a skating rink and they are requesting to expand their use to help defray the cost of operating expenses and enabled and continued operation of a skating center. The type 40 license is on and off premises for beer only. Typically, the type of alcohol license used at golf courses due to the limited cost of the application. Live entertainment would be associated with the private events but would not- Live entertainment would be associated with the private events but would not be held as part of this request. The applicant withdrew the request for concerts after staff indicated their concerns and the sheriff also indicated concerns regarding that. The sheriff has had, staff has had discussions with the sheriff, and condition items number 6 through 9 were added by the Sheriff Department to assist mitigation anticipated through law enforcement and public safety issues. Concert events could later come back as an amended conditional use permit should the commission approve this project, but they would have to make sure they meet all their onsite requirements. Again, special events could be granted through staff based on sufficient parking and onsite improvements being onsite prior to that. Currently, the request limits the number of participants to 252 based on 84 parking spaces with three people per vehicle or three people per space. This number could increase with the improvements on the onsite improvements. In the meantime, the unimproved area that is not being utilized would be screened with events. As you know, there is onsite parking available on the 23rd Street West, and typically the events would be held at times when that would not interfere with the commercial businesses because banquet halls are typically used on Saturdays and Sundays when these businesses are closed. If we can look at the floor plan. You'll see on the floor plan that the area that is considered a service area would also substitute as the bar. The individuals would be able to purchase their alcohol and return to their seats, and the seats would be in the floor area, but not as much as what's shown because what's shown is 12,684 square feet, and they would have to limit the size of the event based on the number of parking spaces that they have. So the individuals would be able to purchase their alcohol at the bar, and then they would move back to their seats. The project currently meets or exceeds the guidelines as established in our ABC ordinance, and no alcohol would be allowed during the skating events. No alcohol would be served or consumed during the skating events or off-site premises. Staff is recommending the commission approve this request subject to the proposed conditions and lack of significant adverse effect on the surrounding area. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding this.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Donovan?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Is the applicant here on Agenda Item Number 5? If you, there's a spokesperson for the applicant, if you'd like to come forward and state your name and address for the record?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Renee Guzman, and my address is 14075 Bancroft Court in the city of Fontana, California. Just today, we got a copy of the staff report that was just read, and basically, the applicant has several questions and clarifications on the proposed conditions. If you don't mind, I would like to go over just quickly on some of the conditions, some of those questions for clarification purposes before we move forward. Specifically, I think one of the main concerns was regarding live entertainment to be allowed for banquets, and that would be weddings, quinceañeras, and so forth, but not concerts. On page 2, on the seventh paragraph of the staff report, it indicates that the events of a banquet hall could also have pertinent live entertainment, however at concert events with live performance, music, or comedy, et cetera, before an audience, whether or not an entrance fee is charged, is not part of this request. I guess our clarification or mostly our question is that when we're talking about live entertainment, I want to ensure that they're not restricting music, live performances during these special banquets. I guess there needs to be some clarification as to what exactly they're describing as a word concerts, and then what is live entertainment versus live performance. Just there will be clarification, there will be no issues down the road. Secondly, we're looking at the whereas and the conditions, and specifically, condition number 11. It indicates the, that should be determined by the planning director that the operation of the use requires, including security measures but not limited to security personnel, providing various security devices such as surveillance or burglar alarm systems, the director is authorized to require such measures. I guess the question of the applicant was, has the director made that determination as to condition number 11? Condition number 12 also indicates that all employees within 90 days of being hired must meet some type of training that meets the requirements of the state ABC. State ABC doesn't have any specific requirements as it comes to specific training for licensees or employees. They do have something that they call LEAD program, and I'm sure you're familiar with it, L-E-A-D. It's not a mandatory training, so I think also clarification on condition number 12, are we talking about the ABC LEAD training, or are we talking about some other specialized training that I am not aware of? My understanding, the only one that ABC puts on is called a LEAD, but it's not a mandatory training. Condition number 16 indicates that per direction of the planning director, no alcohol should be served or consumed during regular skating hours or events. If we could have some clarification or specific as to that condition and its intent, the purpose of applying for a type 40 beer license is to sell and allow consumption during normal business hours, and that is the intention. And I guess condition number 16 says that no alcohol should be served or consumed during regular skating hours or events. I think we need some clarification on that. And last but not least, our condition number 17 indicates that per direction of the planning director, the unpaid portion of the site should be fenced off to prevent parking on the unimproved area. And assuming they're talking about the parking structure or the open land behind the premise that currently is not being used for parking, I just wanted to get some specific as to the fencing. Are we talking specific heights, requirements, just to make sure that with the applicant puts some type of fencing, it's not going to be, what's going to be approved by the city and it's not going to cause a problem down the road.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, like I said, not at this time. It's just, we just got the staff report today reviewing it. Those were the main questions. I know there was a question as to the parking, and I believe it was indicated that down the road, if they obtain additional parking, they can apply for a modified CUP, and then they'll look into the concert situation. And I think down the road, that's definitely going to be an option that they're going to look into. But as it stands, no further questions on this staff report or the conditions.
Okay. So Ms. Donovan, did you want to go through those? I think it was, I kind of summed it up in about four items, I think. Did you want to take each one of those?
Sure. I'll start with number 11. And I believe the planning director indicated that security measures would be required, and that would be security personnel, security devices, surveillance, and burglar alarm system.
I believe, how many security personnel, we're talking, how many security personnel, and I'm assuming it's bonded and so forth, but is there specific uniforms, specific number of security personnel, or is it based on the number of patrons?
I believe, we didn't mention it. I would probably have to look into that question and get back to you on that.
Well, we cap to the number of people based on the parking there anyway?
252, I believe.
Right.
Yeah.
We have 252, but I don't know how many are required.
Okay, whether that would be one or two or possibly three?
I would think somewhere between two and three people.
All right.
Would be required per event.
You'll get back to me on that specific.
Yes, I can do that.
Okay, do you want to take the next item?
Right. Typically, the ABC has training for sale of alcohol. Anyone under 21 up to 30 years old has to be, their ID has to be checked. I believe that's what we're talking about, the state ABC requirement, training within 90 days of hire.
I think what you're referring to is that LEAD training? It's not a, we just recently updated our alcohol ordinance, and our request now is, it just makes good business practices for anybody that's going to have an establishment where they're going to serve alcohol, whether it even be beer or wine, that anyone that would be an employee that would handle the alcohol would go through that training so that we avoid any kind of potential problem moving forward?
And we are talking about the LEAD training from ABC. Yeah, just to let everyone aware they are behind right now over 90 days because they have got a lot of people and they don't have a lot of personnel for that training. So if there's any way, I mean, obviously, they can, they can go ahead and apply for that training, but I'm not sure if the training is going to be conducted by ABC within 90 days of being hired because like I indicated, they are a little bit running behind right now.
Well, then, based on the way it's currently written, then obviously, you would be not in compliance then with the CUP as the way it's currently written until after that training would be completed. Ms. Donovan, next item?
Number 16, no alcohol shall be served or consumed during regular skating hours and events. We had a discussion with the applicant regarding this, and the request that they have, they brought forth through the Planning Commission is one, to have alcohol with their banquets, with the banquet facilities and their entertainment. So we limited, based on the sheriff's comments, from serving alcohol during the skating events, which normally have children there, people under 18, and that's the way we interpret this.
Yeah, because the type 40, as you know, type 40 license does allow minors to be at the location. There's a lot, obviously, in the city of Lancaster, from the information I'm getting, there's not a lot of type 40s. Yeah, there is several type 40s throughout the entire state. Some that I personally assisted in licensing. But if they're going to be restricted only to the banquet days and times, has, is ABC aware of this? Because under state law, they must operate the license during certain times, and as you know, ABC also puts restrictions on their license, and no such restriction has been placed. So I think there's going to be a problem with abiding by CUP conditions and then abiding by state law and ABC conditions as regarding to this particular condition.
Yeah.
Well, I think we'd probably have to investigate what the state ABC determines, and it's possible that I can't answer your question right now.
So just clarification for the record, and I'm sure the attorney might be able to chime in on this. Just because you're issued an alcohol license from the state of California, we as a city can create ordinances that may supersede the use of that license for, however we make a decision based on that, and maybe the attorney can clarify that for us. But I think what you're saying is, is maybe there's a question about the way in which the alcohol license is issued and basis on our condition that we're placing on the business moving forward with the current CUP. My understanding that we can do that, but let the attorney chime in on this.
I would agree with that, Chairman, that the city still, through its police power and its ability to regulate zoning, could impose conditions on a CUP that are more strict than a ABC license.
Commissioner Trott, did you want to make a comment?
If appropriate.
Okay, go ahead.
Because this facility is still used for roller hockey, right?
That's correct.
I am not anywhere near in favor of having spent nine years out on youth soccer fields and seeing parents without alcohol at their youth sporting events, having the parents be able to have a couple beers where their kids are in a roller hockey game and are just out skating around. And so from what I understand from the attorney, we can put this restriction on there. Is that correct?
That's my understanding, and I didn't research the specific issue. I didn't know this was going to be an issue this evening. But my recollection is the chairman was correct in his characterization, essentially, I don't mean to paraphrase for the chairman, but essentially that the conditions of the CUP can be more conservative than the ABC license regulations.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I'd just like to make a quick comment, too. I understand the applicant is looking at it from a business perspective, but as a city, we have to look at the health and welfare of our city and particularly minors. And your skating rink is going to have a lot of minors during the time for skating. Is that right? Is that correct?
Yes.
What would be the average age during skating of the kids that are there?
I think the applicant will be better to answer that question.
Probably teenage, maybe a little bit lower.
I would assume yes.
We're very concerned that if alcohol is served when there's sporting events, when there's minors present, under the circumstances that we're looking at with the way, where the location is, the site of the place, the way it looks, all the things that we've talked about a little bit today, we'd be very, very concerned about serving alcohol during skating times.
Yeah, and I understand your concern. I think my concern is also that, and I wish I had the section with me, but if a liquor license is not in effect and not being used for more than 15 days, then by law, I don't have the section with me, but I may be wrong, but I believe that the license needs to be surrendered back to the state. They're not going to have banquets on an ongoing basis, and if this condition is imposed, then if they don't have a banquet within those 15 days, then they will actually lose their liquor license. And there is a section, I just don't have it with me.
Sure. And we, it sounds to me like we're going to have to continue this because there's too many unanswered questions. But we may need to look at, you may need to look at, a different type of license that will come into compliance with what we're going to do if you want us to, obviously, take a look at and improve it. So I would just say that statement.
Yeah, why don't we take your next, I think we're down to the last item, and we'll go ahead and address that, and if it, and I think that Commissioner Salazar is dead on to in relationship to, if there's some uncertainties here about the conditions that have been placed. I know that when the Sheriff's Department makes specific recommendations of the Planning Commission and/or the City Council, we have a tendency to work in very close harmony with that agency, and it's kind of hard not to, and it would be remiss for us as a Planning Commission body to go against their concerns or their recommendations. And I'm, you know, we had a study session this last week, as we do prior to every Planning Commission meeting, and that was a discussion that was addressed. And, you know, if there's concerns on your part, where we still have open items, where you're in for sure about whether the business either one can be viable, or you don't have the correct alcohol license, or you're in for sure about some of the conditions, then maybe it might be just appropriate for us to continue the item for 30 days, allow you to come back to staff, do your investigation, get some clarity, to make sure that you understand the undertaking moving forward, because the last thing we want to do is put a burden on the, on a business. But then likewise, too, in keeping with Commissioner Salazar and Commissioner Trott's conversations, we also don't want to get ourselves into trouble as we do some forward thinking. And after the Sheriff Department's comments, definitely, I would not be in favor of making a decision tonight that would overrule their recommendations, so. Ms. Donovan, did we, did we address all? Ms. Donovan, did we, did we address all the, the items we talked about?
I still need to respond to item number seventeen about the fence. I believe that we're, since it's a temporary measure, that we were going to allow a six-foot-high chain link fence across that boundary between the paved area and the unpaved. Was there another issue concerning what the difference between the light entertainment and a concert?
Yeah, I have that down as number one.
Well, overall, I believe the applicant is trying to get a comfort line, and it's very difficult for me to explain this, but I believe the primary function is that you're going to have quinceañeras, weddings, birthday parties with accessory entertainment, whether it be somebody singing on a guitar or a DJ to service that event. There, there's a difference between that and having a concert with dinner than there is with the, the function of a banquet with accessory music. You would not be able to have a concert, and unfortunately, I don't have a definition of concert with me, whether you have a paid concert or unpaid concert. So I believe I would have to investigate the definitions better before I can answer your questions. If you had something else.
Okay. I think that brings us then to the, the questions that the applicant had. Did you have anything else for us?
No, sir.
Okay. Before you sit down, commissioners, any questions? Applicant?
One last question. What, what is the, the maximum capacity of, of the current location?
Is that on staff report?
No, no. How many can you put in there is what I'm asking you.
I, I don't have an answer.
Fourteen forty.
Fourteen forty? You can put fourteen hundred and forty people in there, but because of the parking restrictions, we're saying two hundred and fifty-two. Is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, that should be it. Thank you. Ms. Donovan, do we have any speaker cards on this agenda item?
We had Renee Guzman, Julieta Amor Solo.
All right. Renee, if you'd like to come forward.
Yeah, I get it.
Okay, I'm sorry. And who was the second speaker card? I believe we had two.
Julieta Amor Solo.
Okay. If you'd state your name and address for the record.
My name is Julieta Amor Solo. My address is sixteen oh two East Lancaster Boulevard, Lancaster, Cali, Lancaster, California, nine three five three five. I just want to add something that is being said regarding the, when you serve alcohol, when the skating is being used for skate, well, the place, if you see the square feet is really big. And in very different occasions, we've been using half of the skating rink to skating and the other part was for adults dancing. And they have a van over here when they can't serve alcohol only to this, to the people that was in that side. Even the skating sites, we divided with cones. When this part can be skating with the kids and their mothers, and this part is doing a completely something different with an adult, and is not mixed up because of the space that is inside. So you can have in one part, and even with the kids, maybe thirty, a hundred, dancing, I mean, roller skating. And in the other side, you have a completely different event because it's another space for it. So I really think that what Mr. Guzman was saying about selling the al, the beer or whatever during, during the working hours, I really don't think it's just something specific that is only when it's kids in the roller skating. It's more like a, when it's another event going at the same time. It's almost like when you have a private party. Children's go to the private party and the person to sell the alcohol to grownups, they have to be aware to who they sell it and to who is drinking it. That's what is security. That's what is the people to check their ID, and that's what you have to be aware of all these things. So I think that you, I couldn't, I don't say they, I, I agree with all of you. First is the safety of the childrens in our, I'm number one in that. I have kids, I have grandchildren, I have to be watching for them. But I really think that you see from another point of view, like when you have the security and the people qualifying to be doing these two different things, it's a little bit more like you are using the alcohol license during the working hours of skating, but it's when it's another events, too.
Right.
So that's just my point.
Okay.
That you can see it, it's a space big enough for the people running skating here and for the people, we have a lot of senior citizens to go to dance over there, they teach them and all of it. Sometimes they like to have a wine or a beer or whatever. So I really don't think it's a mix between the kids to go to roll or the people that are doing something else. That was just my point of view.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have a question before you sit down?
Question, ma'am.
Question, huh?
I'm sorry, I might have missed it. It's separated by another room? It's a whole nother room or it's separated by?
It's the same, it's a big, it's a bigger space, and we divide it by cones. We, we put cones, and in this side, people roller skating, and in this one, they do something else.
Just orange cones, like you see it?
Just something to divide it.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Donovan, any other speakers?
Yes, we have Olivia Pano.
If you'd state your name and address for the record?
Olivia Pano. And my home address is in Las Vegas, but I, I'm here all the time. I'm the owner of the Holiday Skating Center, and I thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to hear us. And I'll give you a little bit of history of the holiday skating. My husband, Peter Pano, built the Holiday Skating Center in nineteen eighty-eight, nineteen eighty, with our hopes and dreams that it would always be successful and profitable for him and his family. And we've had our share of success and profits. But in the last few years of this recession that has become a depression, we are having a difficult time making ends meet. We are in serious jeopardy financially. That is why I stand in front of you this evening. We are desperately seeking a way to keep our business open. Our only hope is that for us, for you to grant a CUP, to generate enough funds for our business to be financially stable. You see, we have private events now where they're, they bring their own alcohol beverages and they serve it to their guests free, which we do not generate no income. If we had a, the CUP license, we could charge for these beverages, which would immensely help us generate the funds that we so desperately need. To keep our doors open to the public for skating, since the holiday was built in nineteen eighty, we've offered the AV Community Fund, family activities, and we have a group of senior citizens that have faithfully showed up every Tuesday and Thursday morning for two-hour skate sessions since we opened. We have customers who have celebrated their birthdays with us, and now we're seeing their children. They're having their birthdays with us. We offer our children a safe place to come and have fun. And let's face it, there are not too many places in AV that there is for the children. And we do have security. We protect the kids at all times. The children under eighteen are not permitted to leave our premises without a parent or guardian. So I ask you to please grant a CUP license that we need so badly to generate enough financial stability to keep providing our services. This concerns our children, our schools, our churches, and our community as a whole. Please leave the doors open for us to acquire extra parking so we can do concerts. That will really, really help us. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Donovan, any, do we have any more speaker cards?
There's no more.
We'll go ahead and declare the public hearing closed, and I'll open it up to commissioners' discussion. And I would like to go first. One of the things that I was concerned with, and I think that we, we've all pretty much shared, is that seems to be there, there's several things that are unclear between the applicant and, and staff. I don't know if it's unclear with staff, but I think it's more unclear with the applicant. And I think that rather than for us to make a decision here tonight based on the information that's been provided in our packet and the discussions that we had in our study session, I'd be more inclined to continue this, to allow the applicant to come back in, have a discussion with staff, get clarity on, on the definition of entertainment, making sure that there's an understanding about security, about the use of alcohol during skating, as we've already discussed. And then the last thing is the fencing. The last thing we want to do is move in haste here and, and then not, not be workable for either the city or for the applicant. So that would be my, my, my first thought. Other fellow commissioners, I'd like to get your feelings on this.
I would agree that, I, I think there needs to be some further discussion between the applicant and staff. I have a couple of questions of, of staff, if I may, please. And with this conditional use permit, I know with other conditional use permits, we've been able to discuss perhaps the exterior color palette and so on and so forth, or where this is an existing building versus a new building. Are we able to look at those issues at this point in time?
CUP or?
Was there any discussion with the applicant about perhaps modifying or dressing up the exterior of this building? Could I know that we've really, I mean, the car wash on Beach and Avenue J was, we kind of put that guy through the wringer, and there's been several others that we really have tried to create that theme throughout the Lancaster area as to what we're trying to accomplish. Was there any of those conversations on this?
There was conversation between the applicant and the planner regarding possibly changing the colors of the facade into something a little bit more toned down. The, we didn't pursue it. We, we had the discussion with them. However, they indicated they didn't have enough money, and we really didn't pursue that issue.
I recall several other discussions with folks bringing in projects, that the fact of finances didn't enter into where we were trying to head as far as a commission. I mean, that's one of the beauties of us having the conditional use process, in my opinion at least. And believe me, I'm not trying to push anyone out of business. I run a business right now, and I know what these times bring. But on the other hand, let's not be short sighted in what we're approving kind of having an effect on our community fifteen, twenty years down the road, long after we're off of the commission. My thought process, because I am also with Chairman Mann in favor of extending this or continuing it to the next planning commission meeting, is that once again, I would like those discussions to be part of, between staff and applicant, because I just have to be, I guess, honest and say that I would not vote in favor of the CUP unless the colors are addressed.
We'll have that discussion.
Commissioner Salazar, did you want to comment?
I would just say I concur with both of you at this point.
Okay. Commissioner Foel?
Oh, I just would like to address the color issue also because I, I know you're feeling you're being harsh and negative, but in reality, the white color can bring more business.
Well, see, I got that from you. You trained, taught me everything I knew about color, Mary.
So I think our goal would be, we want their business to flourish, so let's work with them to help them with that as much as we can. Maybe if we have someone to redev, I think I mentioned before and I should chime into it. I know when I had my business, and I know the struggle I have in your own business, that was helpful to me when the city did have someone and we talked for a while, and she gave me some real good input. So maybe we can find something like that for them.
And just once again, speaking on behalf of myself, you know, a different topic, but I'm going to be looking real close at, that I don't, in this commissioner's opinion, kids' sports and alcohol don't mix. And so that discussion needs to be had prior to coming back, how we're going to resolve that issue.
Understanding that there's money in alcohol sales, so.
Yeah.
I do understand.
Yeah. Okay, any more discussion? Okay, so with that, I am going to make a motion that we continue this agenda item to our regular meeting of April, I believe it's April twenty-first, with the direction of staff to go back with the applicant and address those four items that was brought before us as a concern, so that those items can be clarified and with the added item from Commissioner Trott in regards to the color palette of the building as well. That's my motion.
I'll second.
So there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Let's call for the question.
Motion carries four zero.
Agenda item number six, vesting tentative parcel map number six four six three seven. We'll declare the public hearing open. Let the record reflect that we've received a letter from the applicant agreeing to all the conditions. Ms. Donovan, do we have any speaker cards on agenda item number six?
No, we do not.
Okay. Seeing that we have no speaker cards, if it's the commissioners' wishes, we'll go ahead and waive the hearing of the staff report, declare the public hearing closed, and I'll open it up for discussion and/or entertaining any motions on agenda item number six.
I'll make the motion that we adopt resolution number zero eight dash zero six, approving vesting tentative parcel map number six four six three seven.
There's been a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Second. Call for the question.
Motion carries four zero.
Okay, that brings us to director's announcements. So Ms. Donovan, given that you're the director tonight?
I don't have any announcements today.
You don't have any announcements. Here's your big opportunity to be the director. Bruce is gone, you could just make all sorts of announcements that he would be beholding to. Wouldn't that be fun?
That would be.
Yeah. Gosh darn it. All right, this move to commission agenda. Items on, commissioners?
I guess we kind of discussed about the dust control ordinance, and is that a ordinance that's not going to come back in front of the planning commission for any input or anything like that? Is that just going to go straight to the city council?
My understanding is it will go to the city council.
I guess, guess you now know that you need to go to a city council meeting and chime in on that ordinance, huh?
I guess so.
Okay. All right, this move to, if there's no other items for the?
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to say that I greatly appreciated and benefited the presentation from Dave Ledbetter on the update that we received last Monday. Appreciate all his hard work in keeping us well informed. all his hard work in keeping us well informed on the general plan update.
What presentation was that? It was us.
Mark was off getting married, you know, goofing around, but I appreciate you bringing that, obviously, just for the record, for the public's awareness, last week, on Monday evening, we had a update to the general plan, and I also appreciate Mr. Ledbetter keeping us apprised of where we're at with the process and, and how we've gotten to the point where we're at now, so I think it was very enlightening, so I do appreciate that. I know Mr. Ledbetter's not here tonight, but hopefully the staff will pass that along to him. Seeing that we don't have any other items on a Commission Agenda, we'll move to Public Business from the floor on non-agenda items. This portion of the agenda allows an individual the opportunity to address the Commission on any subject regarding city business. Under state legislation, no action can be taken on non-agenda items. Members of the public should be aware of this when addressing the Commission regarding items not specifically referenced on the agenda. Ms. Donovan, do we have any spe, I didn't mean to catch you, do we have any speakers?
I don't have any cards.
Okay, then with that then, we're going to adjourn this meeting to Monday, April 14th, 2008, at 5:30 PM in the large Planning Conference Room, Lancaster City Hall. This meeting's adjourned.